Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM. Let me call to order the meeting Merrimack Planning Board for March 19th, 2019. Let me remind everyone who will address the board to be sure and sign in on the clipboard that's on the table in front of me and speak clearly in the microphone and make sure that it's turned on so the folks at home can hear you. Let me appoint Nelson into a voting position in for Mike Redding tonight, and that will give us a six-member board. The first item on our agenda -- oh, I'm sorry, our next meeting after tonight is April 2nd, 2019, at 7:00 PM in this room. That does it for announcements, and the next item on our agenda is Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. Kelly, what have you?
So you've got a regional impact memo in regards to the Silver Realty subdivision, and staff's recommendation is that the board determine this is not of regional impact.
What say the board with respect to the staff's recommendation on regional impact?
Chairman, I make a motion we accept the staff's recommendation in full.
Second -- do it with the microphone next time.
Oh.
Second by Lynn Christensen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero to accept the staff's recommendation on that. Kelly, is there any other report?
Not tonight.
Are there any questions from members of the board for the staff tonight? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the first item on our agenda -- or, I'm sorry, it's the third agenda item, the first project. John Flatley Company is the applicant, and Gilbert Crossing LLC is the owner and John J. Flatley owner, and this is a reopened public hearing due to the decision to deny the application made on February 19th, 2019, lacking the required quorum for consideration of an amendment to a previously approved mixed-use development conditional use permit. The parcel is located at 645-673-685-703 and 707 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Wellhead Protection Area District and Tax Map 6E Lot 3-1, 3-3, 3-4, 3-5, and 3-6. My understanding is that the applicant has withdrawn his request for this agenda item tonight, and so no actions required of the board. Item four on our agenda is Merrimack Parcel A LLC is the applicant and owner and its continued review of an amendment to the previously approved mixed-use site plan for Phase One of the Merrimack Park Place Project, proposing an additional 32 multifamily residential units and a modification of 17,000 square feet of specialty retail and restaurant space into a subsequent phase. The parcel is located at 10 Premium Atlas Boulevard in the I-2 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 3C Lot 191-2. It's case number Planning Board 2019-6. It's continued from our February 19th meeting, and the applicant has requested a continuance to April 16th?
Sixteen.
Sixteenth meeting. What's the will of the board with respect to the applicant's request?
Chairman, I make a motion we accept the applicant's request. We no further notice the butters.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero to continue item number four to our April 16th meeting. Item five on our agenda is Brett Vaughn as the applicant and Brett W. Vaughn Revocable Trust as the owner. This is a consideration of an amendment to a previously approved subdivision, Oak Ridge, to permit blasting on-site during construction. The parcel is located at 123 Wilson Hill Road in the R-1 Residential District, Tax Map 4A Lot 23. It's case Planning Board 2019-7. Kelly, is there anything that we need to know before here from the applicant?
So just to remind the board, this applicant has completed their conditional approval, received final approval, and has recorded the plan. What we're going to be discussing tonight is in regards to a Conservation Commission comment for the blasting. So in order to amend that comment, Mr. Vaughn needs to be before you to discuss how the board wants to go forward with that amendment to the condition.
Thank you, Kelly, for the introduction. And Mr. Vaughn, although we know each other well, go ahead and introduce yourself for the folks at home and sign in, and then when you're ready, tell us what's up.
So Brett Vaughn, 123 Wilson Hill Road. So the reason that I'm before you tonight is that I'd like to request that we remove as a condition of approval the ability to blast for the project at 123 Wilson Hill Road. As recommended by yourself during the process of going through the approval for the subdivision, I had met with a butters, the property, trying to see if we could get some support and along with some other changes that were made. I did agree to not to blast, thinking at the time that that was a bad thing. So, and also at the Conservation Board meeting, I had mentioned to the board that in an attempt that turned to be futile to gain support for the project that there wouldn't be any blasting. Since then, I've learned that blasting is actually a very efficient, safe, and regulated way to remove ledge. I've been advised that the hammering process, which is the other option from blasting, could be six weeks, two months of hammering for eight hours a day, and that it's really, really not very pleasant to hear. And that the blasting process is simple, efficient, safe, and highly regulated, particularly in this town. So that's what I'm here to discuss, to see if that's possible, that we could blast instead of hammering on the project.
Can you outline for us as best you can what you've discovered you've needed to blast? What's the extent and what the proposal would be?
Well, I don't remember the exact volume that they talked about, but it's -- they're talking about six feet. So I know there's a pretty good stretch, particularly at the entrance where the road entrance will be off of Wilson Hill Road, maybe 150, 200 feet in the width of the road. We did some test drilling just to see where the ledge was and how hard it was, and we have an average of five feet before we get to ledge, and it's like an 11-foot cut. But I don't remember the exact volume.
Make sure I understand that. So you need to blast to a depth of six feet of ledge roadway width, 150 feet long?
Yeah, about like that, yeah.
Okay. And it's roadway is what we're talking about?
Yeah, and then there's a retention pond on the property, too. There could be a couple of feet in there, and then we didn't test all the way up the road because as we get, as you -- the big cut is right at the bottom. And then most of it's, there's a lot of fill area, and there's some areas where it's pretty shallow. Most of our test pits were four, four-and-a-half feet deep. We don't think there's going to be ledge up there, but there might be. But the main piece is at the base of the road.
Does the presence of ledge under your retention pond change your engineer's view of how your drainage is going to work?
I don't know. I've never heard that it did.
Wouldn't it seem like it's a good question to sort out? I mean, if you put it on top of ledge, will the water infiltrate?
I mean, we spent a lot of time working with the town and the engineers to make sure that the retention and the water and the stormwater runoff is appropriate, so I'm assuming that they know what they're talking about. But if you'd like, I can ask that question.
It may be necessary. Let's hear the discussion goes with everyone else here tonight. It seems to me that whatever their calculations were, their estimation of how the drainage would work was based on an assumption that there wasn't ledge underneath the detention pond.
Well, actually, the engineers told me when I first read this, and I was trying to figure out how to approach it, because I did tell my neighbors, I said, "Listen, I'm really looking for support here," and like I said, ultimately, we didn't get the support that we were looking for, and it -- but we said, you know, "We won't blast, we'll move the direction of the thing, we'll consider..." It seems arbitrary to even consider the fact of water in the first place, but...
Are there questions by other members of the board for Mr. Vaughn? Nelson?
I have no questions. I have some opinions, but maybe we should...
I want to have an opportunity to hear from various individuals in the public and the neighbors and things. There have been two correspondences entered into the record related to this. Let's see if they're short enough to read it to the record. We have two letters. One is by Sean and Allison Farrell dated March 13th. It's been in the package for the planning board, and it'll be entered into the record. I'll kind of read and summarize as we go because the next one's a little bit longer. "To whom I make concerns, when able to physically be at tonight's meeting, we're writing to encourage the Merrimack Planning Board to allow Mr. Vaughn to blast if and when he encounters ledge during the building of the road across the street. We are direct butters, and we prefer that it be completed as quickly and quietly as possible, as we understand the two options for dealing with ledge during the road construction are either using a hammer drill or on an excavator or blasting. The use of a hammer drill will cause significant noise and prolong the construction by as much as a couple of months. Blasting is a quicker and quieter option, and that's why they support it." The second letter is from Michael Redding, who is also an abutter to this. He expresses his opinion related to this. "As an abutter to the proposed subdivision, my residence located at 105 Wilson Hill Road, my opinion is being presented as an abutter." He is opposed to approving the blasting and indicates, "My opposition is based upon the evidence that blasting will cause contamination and damage to drinking water wells at abutting properties. Blasting requires the use of chemicals that are highly toxic and can be easily absorbed by rain and infiltrated through the ground surface and into the bedrock aquifer. Even with the best management practices, toxic chemicals cannot be contained in a way that will prevent them from being dispersed into the ground surface and ultimately into the bedrock groundwater and abutting wells." And he provides some citations to the Emory and Garrett Report and Letter as support for that. I'm sure that all the Planning Board members have had a chance to read the entirety of the letter. He indicates it's a unique characteristic of the bedrock aquifer and that this area in this area, and one that provides a significant source of water yield for many of the butters' wells, and he has observed that in his own drinking water well, that the measured water level during a rain period rises significantly, indicating that the wells are recharged from groundwater in this area. Blasting will also cause damage to the water production rates of the butters' drinking water wells, as noted in the Emory and Garrett Letter. And from a butter testimony from the initial hearing, many butters have wells that produce very low water yields. Blasting will cause stress to the bedrock aquifer and result in collapse of the linnamints and fissures that further reduce the yield of water in the wells and likely make them dry. I feel it's important to recognize the vulnerability of the wells, similarly to how the board might view damages to historic building that is within the blasting radius. The wells are no different than an old foundation that would be damaged from blasting vibrations and therefore should be treated with the same protection. Moreover, there are other options that exist to be used in the place of blasting, ho-ramming and non-explosive demolition agent. In summary, I'm opposed to the blasting application because upon -- based upon the damages that blasting will have on the butters' drinking water wells and the availability of other methods to remove the rock that will not impose the same harm." And that's from Mike Redding. Those are the two correspondences we have. Those are entered in as testimony during the public hearing and also in writing. Are there other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Please come forward. This gentleman here in the back with the blue jacket. Come forward and introduce yourself, and then when you're ready, please tell us what's on your mind.
Things going like usual.
On the far line?
I don't want to throw it at you.
Yeah. It's like my purse.
Yep, we are.
Okay. Fred Grimes, 117 Wilson Hill Road. "My biggest concern with Mr. Vaughn's project when he started this was the blasting part and the effect on my well. In 2017, Chairman Best suggested to Mr. Vaughn to meet with the butters to iron out differences over the plan, building conditions, and wall concerns. A compromise was achieved with a conservation easement put in place and an agreement that no blasting would be involved with this project. On 7/18/17, Brett Vaughn stated at the Planning Board meeting that he had agreed to no blasting to get favorable support from the butters to get application approval. On 2/6/18, approval was predicated on the conditions that there would be no blasting during the construction of this project. Last month, Mr. Vaughn repeatedly called my house and pleaded with me to allow him to blast instead of hydraulic hammering away the ledge he has on his property and promised me that my well would be guaranteed. My wife and I said no to the blasting. My question is, why are we here? You know, does anybody's word mean anything anymore?"
Thank you for your testimony. I can offer a little bit of insight into that, but the board's going to have some discussions on the substance. So applicants are, every applicant that comes before us describes their project and makes a presentation about what characters and characteristics and features they have with them, and when they encounter a situation where it might change, they've got to come back and ask us again, and that doesn't necessarily mean that we'll grant that relief.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, we turned around, we made everything rosy and cherry that, "Okay, we met with all the butters, and here's what I agreed to do." Now we're reneging on it right now.
Haven't gotten that far yet, but thanks for the testimony. Other butters who wish to weigh in? Take your time to settle in and then sign in, and when you're ready, please tell us your testimony.
I'll try not to take your pen.
It's my firm's pen. It's got the number on there, so you can call if you need anything. Go ahead, take that one.
I live at 101 Wilson Hill Road. I'm, I would say, remote on the edge of, as an abutter, but nonetheless, given how wells and things are in the area, there could be an effect. I guess the concerns that certainly some people have, and a couple of my neighbors who are not here, changes to the well's performance or contamination, I think remotely foundation cracking unless you're fairly close to where the blasting might be. There's evidence in some wells in the area, as I think Mike Redding pointed out, that changes in the static levels indicating some shallow water sources, and depending on moisture falling, rain, and so on, there are changes. And with several orientations of rock formations in the area, and unknown distribution of fissures in the location, the possibility of changes to resident water supply is a valid concern. If water supply changes occur, who will be responsible for any remediation? That's a question. About the blasting, I think somewhat Brett answered the area of blasting and depth, the blasting materials, AnFO, which is the kind of common one, which is ammonium nitrate fuel oil, or is another blasting medium, and what's the track record of any blasting contractor. Merrimack has some history of blasting contamination, a prime example being results from blasting at the side of the Home Depot property at 101A when that occurred. I would say if the process is going to be approved, it would seem to be a smart decision to test wells for water quality and quantity prior to any work, maybe again in any intervals or certainly at the conclusion of blasting to provide a reliable benchmark comparison of any changes.
Excellent points. Thank you for making them. Other butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Please come forward.
To start off, I agree with everything else everyone has said in terms of well water quality and the shifting of the ground, but to add to this, I think I'm probably about, my house is probably about 500 feet from where he wants to blast, and as you can imagine, that brings up some concerns for me. But to add to that, there are some very large pine trees in between the blasting site and my house, and I worry about ground shifting in those root systems and, you know, trees falling on my house. And to add to that, being a direct butter, I was not contacted by Brett.
For the meeting tonight?
For the blasting location.
Oh, for the blasting. So you got official notice from the town that we're here tonight?
Right.
Okay.
Right. But not officially contacted like the other neighbors.
Thank you for that, Mr. Peters. Questions for Mr. Peters?
Hmm?
I was just asking my board members if they had any questions for you. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no. No, you're good.
Continue if you have more.
No.
Okay.
I'll add.
Thank you for your testimony. Obviously, being, you know, closer to proximity to it makes it different for you, so it's important.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other butters who wish to weigh in? Citizens?
Jim Wood, I'm an abutter at 119 Wilson Hill Road. I see Chief Manwale's here.
I talked to him on the phone about the regulations, about blasting in town. I contacted the state geologist at Concord, and he discussed blasting problems in that area, what type of rock is available. For my trade, when I was working, I was an aircraft mechanic. I used to send sound waves through materials and pick up cracks. So I could send a sound wave, very small one, down through a solid piece of material and find a crack that was six inches in piece of aluminum. So I was trying to get my feel for what would happen if you sent a sound wave down through a piece of rock that was solid. The other night, we talked to the guy that's going to possibly do the blasting for Brett, and he explained how his process was, and the regulations all looked great. I mean, the state has its regulations, and the town just responded on them. So when I went through all the regulations, everything looks good in that part. The only follow-through for all this is, if something happens, we're out. My property, like I explained before, there's three wells on my property, and one produces .75 gallons per minute recharge rate. There's two other wells on my property that are completely empty. There is no water in those wells. I've tried everything I could, so we redrilled the well that we get water out now. So I put $40,000 into that one well to get .75 gallons. So I will never be not afraid to protect my water source. That's the only one I have. I have to build a road on my property if I want to put another well in. There's no place on my property where I can drill that they already came out and said that there's a possibility for water, and Skellings and Sons told me, "We'll just back the truck up and drill anywhere." Well, they tried that to other locations, so I got nothing for those. So I am going to be very cautious when it comes time for water. The state geologist said, "The chances of them cracking the ledge that far is very slim." He said, "But you'd be more likely to get contamination," which would be the same to me. If you contaminate that well and it no longer can be used for my one water source, what limited water I have, I'm out. I cannot live at that house. So, I mean, I've talked to everybody, and I'm glad the state has the regulations it does and the town does because it does look out for the people that live close to the place where the blast is. There is no doubt. But as things go, that is one of the reasons why when we started this process, we asked Brett not to blast, because we have no recourse but other than a well now on my property will take probably $40,000 to $50,000 for me already when I've already got at least that amount of money invested in the one well I have now. So I can't express enough how cautious I am on my property with my well. We no longer use any kind of chemical on top of my surface at all. So I will protect my well and speak out on this matter for that alone. I talked to a blast guy last night. I'm not worried about my foundation. I can see my foundation. If he cracked my foundation, I can get somebody to fix that. But if the well goes bad, I won't know until 10 years, maybe a year down the road. And happens in fall, we have all sorts of water. Till July 1st, I'll have all the water I want. Comes out every orifice on my hill. And all of a sudden, July 1st comes, we get dry season, and I don't have any water. And I can tell where my water comes from. I monitor my water. I get 50 gallons, I use 50 gallons a day during the summer. I use 70 gallons a day during the winter. I've got to monitor down on my thing to make sure I use just so much water because I only get enough. So I know exactly where my water comes from. As soon as the water level drops down on the hill below 300 feet, I no longer get water. So I'm not, if the town brings water out, bring it out. I don't want your puff, but I'll bring, you could bring water out because there's, that is the big concern on everybody out there on my side of the, out there that, the limited water and the resources that we have if it goes bad.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Other questions by members of the board for Mr. Wood? Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there other members of the public who wish to weigh in? Captain Manuelli, I know that you're here to potentially address questions related to this. Is there?
Sir.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. Come forward, please.
I thought someone else was coming up. My name is Tony Capuccio. I'm the director.
Hang on, Tony. You've got to wait till you're out of microphone and after you sign in.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, though, for the eagerness to get going.
Well, we don't have to revisit a lot of this stuff. My name is Tony Capuccio, director butter at 111 Wilson Hill Road. And I basically want to concur with the letter, which I was not even aware of already in terms of all the concerns about blasting and contamination and whatnot, and also with most of the other butters who are concerned about well damage and contamination. There is really very little recourse if anything does go wrong on any one of the butters' well properties. Another concern of mine is we've had many, many years of proposals about this development, numerous engineering studies. Why are we having this creeping baseline now? Has everyone agreed there was going to be no blasting? That was one of the agreements that was made among the board and the butters and whatnot. Why are we revisiting this? This creeping baseline is annoying, to say the least.
I can blame, I can't blame you for having that perception after having to come back here over and over.
Right.
However, I kind of touched on what Mr. Grimes had mentioned earlier. Any applicant that has a proposal always has the ability to come in and ask for whatever that is that they'd like to do on their property.
No, it's not, sorry. It's not, it's not the question of not having the ability or the right to come in, but it also does draw some concern about the adequacy the right to come in and, but it also does draw some concern about the adequacy of the engineering studies that were already done, numerous engineering studies, and how adequate were they if now we're just discovering this? This was not known to the engineers beforehand? What other things did they miss? But let's not go into that, but this blasting versus hammering, if there's a safer way to protect the wells, and it takes longer, it costs more, well, I think that's a good trade-off, because there is really no recourse to fix those wells other than, other than what an abutter has said, bringing out water to Wilson Hill Road, which is a costly endeavor. On a somewhat related issue, since we're talking about this proposal again, there is, and I'll use the term conservation land or buffer for want of a better term. Wasn't clear from previous meetings and agreements that this conservation land is going to be clearly recorded in deeds. I hope that is so, and I hope that copies of that will be given to all the abutters so they can be used when they sell their property. And I also think this, again, I don't know if it's the correct term, conservation land or buffer zone, should be posted with signs so delineating its entire perimeter so that if any, any construction or blasting gets done near it, it will be very evident. I guess that's basically it.
Thank you for their, for your testimony about those items. Are there any questions by members of the board? Thank you very much for your testimony, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm all done.
Are there other abutters other than Captain Manuelli? Okay. I do want to hear from you, Captain, about some of the details of blasting and regulations of it and what your thoughts are on what's proposed by the applicant. Please come forward.
Maybe.
I'm sure I'll hear about that later.
I'm sure you will.
John Manuelli, Merrimack Fire Marshal. So what I'm here to speak about is simply the blasting process. I cannot recommend it, I cannot not recommend it. I am not speaking here for the abutters, and I am not speaking here for the developer. I've just been asked to explain the blasting process within the state and the safeties that we have because of it. And a lot of this is basically because of the mall, which I know Nelson was on the board at the time, I believe Alastair and Tom were. The mall was an extensive blasting. It was actually, if anyone's been, I'm sure a lot of you have been to the mall, where you're walking into the stores was under rock, under granite at that time. If you look at the wall behind the plaza, there's a 90-foot depth that was cut in that place. They cut it in a series of cuts or for a series of months. And because of the size of that, we took the state requirements to blast, and anyone who blasts in the state has to be a licensed, certified, and insured blaster, just to do any sort of blasting in the state. We took the state regulations and expanded upon it. The chief looked at the state ones and basically doubled the distance that's required for what's called a pre-blast survey. We'll get into that one in a minute. When the blasters, when the blasters present to us, they give us a blasting plan. I review the blasting plan to make sure that it follows within the regulations within the state and our own town regulations, which is, again, more stringent than the state's. We then issue a permit. Within that restrictions, that's basically restrictions on when they can blast, they can't blast on weekends, holidays, they can't blast when it's raining or snowing, all of that is regulated. They have to notify us before the blast, they have to notify us after the blast. Anytime there's damage, they have to report it to us, we go out and look at the damage. And I've been doing this 13 years now, and I've been out for just a few times, and every time I've been out for damage, it's pretty much been what's called fly rock, which is basically a piece of broken rock from the blast that went outside of the blast area. And they typically try and prevent that by using blasting mats, which are basically a bunch of old tires chained and bolted together. They put on the holes that they've drilled to fill with explosives to prevent that from happening. Sometimes it'll come off of the top of it, a piece of rock will fly out. We had Crown Point recently, about two years ago, actually, they had a couple of pieces of rock come out and land in the parking lot at the, the business next to it, which I can't remember now. No damage, fortunately didn't hit any cars, but it could have. Typically, that's the type of damage we see. I believe someone mentioned the, or the contamination at Home Depot. That was actually not from the blasting agent, that was from old gas tanks that were in the ground from previous gas stations in the Penachuck Square area that caused the contamination. Years and years of leakage from those tanks, and when the blasting happened, it shook that up and got it into the water. But it wasn't actually the AnFO that caused it, and I believe it wasn't AnFO they were using down there, that was before my time, but it was actually contamination in the ground previously that was shaken up by the blasting. One of the things that you do when you do the blasting is the blaster will have to do a pre-blast survey. In the state, it's required to be 250 feet from the blast area. Merrimack requires 500 feet from the blast area. What that means is every house or structure within 500 feet of where they're going to blast is going to get surveyed by an independent company if the homeowner allows it. And that's the key thing. Sometimes they are refused access. If you allow access to your house, they will come in, they will photograph every room in your house, they will be looking for cracks, doors that don't open or close properly, broken windows, any sort of damage to your house inside and outside, and they will basically have a report on your house. So now, a month later, if they have a blast go off and you find a crack in your foundation, you call them up, they come over, they look at it, they say, yep, that crack was not there before, that's damage that they will pay for through their insurance company to repair. So that's a, you know, a nice safety for that.
Joan, pause for a second, I think Lynn has a question.
Joan, quick question.
Yes.
500 feet as the crow flies or road length?
500 feet from the blast area. If you've got a rectangle, 500 feet of.
As the crow flies, okay, thank you.
Okay, so from anywhere in that area, not from the middle of it, from the edge. So any, any damage that was not pre-existing is covered under their insurance and will be repaired, and they do well testing in case of wells. Obviously, with the proximity of the town wells to the mall, that was one of the big concerns that we had, is we didn't want to contaminate the wells that were right across the street from where the mall is today. So that's where this all came from.
Okay. So can you shed any light on the notion of, of the contamination question and why it seems to be an issue that's coming up from, obviously, Mr. Redding is a civil engineer, he's not just kind of pulling this out of air, and as you look around to these blast sites, that seems to be a concern that comes up is the idea that the blasting agent itself somehow causes some contamination?
The AnFO, which is basically a combination, and I'm not sure what they're going to be using, I don't know what the blasting.
Emulsion.
You're going to use an emulsion?
Yeah, similar to the mall.
Okay.
I don't mind, I could kind of have a quick question, but you've got to be by a microphone, and we'll get you a chance to testify in a second, so.
So depending on what the material is, the blast will burn up most of it, but not all of it. So there will be a residue left. I can't speak to what that residue is, because I don't know what, what particular emulsion they're using. Like I say, AnFO is basically ammonium nitrate fertilizer and diesel fuel in most cases. And you would have a residue of what's left that wasn't burned up and, and basically disposed of in the explosion itself. So is there a chance of contamination? Absolutely. Is it widespread? Again, I can't answer that.
Okay, thank you for that. Neil, I think you were leaning forward with a question before.
With the, the pre-blast test that you're.
Yep, survey, yeah.
The survey, that does include an analysis of the well?
Yep.
Is that like water quality?
It will do a water quality. I don't believe we specifically say a water flow, but that is something that we could incorporate into if we were asked to. It gives us the leeway to put more stringent requirements based on the circumstances. And if, if that was the case, we could say that a flow test would have to be done, and that could be included in that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions further?
Just one comment. John, my recollection of the Home Depot site was that initially they were using the AnFO type explosives, and then they contaminated a well. It was believed that the AnFO caused contamination in that well, and they switched to what was called Codex, which is basically a carbon dioxide type of thing. And that, there was no further damage other than they had to repair the wells, which I believe they had to go to an alternate source of water for those homes that had been damaged. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, and like I said, that was.
That's my recollection.
That was before my time, and I know part of it was because of the, the gas stations in the area that did cause an issue. You, you were here at the time, so I'm going to defer to you.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Anything else that you'd like to offer for us, Captain?
That's pretty much it. I will say that all of the times I have inspected for damage, there hasn't, there really has not been any foundation damage that we've actually had. The mall, like I said, was a very big series of blasts. They did some very large, very deep cuts, 18, 20 feet at a time, and, and significant areas. I was out there for quite a few of them, and I'll tell you this, it's actually kind of not as exciting as it seems. It's a little boom and that's it. There was no reported damage that I saw, although there was in an abutter who did actually go on TV, claimed there was damage, brought on Channel 9, and I got a call from the blaster saying that they did a pre-blast survey, and every crack that was pointed out on Channel 9 was on the pre-blast survey. And they were actually going to hit them with insurance fraud if you put a claim in, you didn't put a claim in. So that did make the news, but there actually was not damage from that. They actually did a very good job at the mall as far as the blasting. And, and there is a lot of blasting in town, which people don't realize, there's a quarry right next to BAE that blasts quite a bit, and we're currently blasting at Crown Point right now, there's doing some blasting down that end for some things, and I, there was, I think there was talk of possibly blasting at 10 Premium Ellis Boulevard, I'm not sure if that's going to happen or not.
Okay. Thank you for sharing the additional information about this, and especially kind of some of the experiences about that. My memory is that with the Outlet Mall, the planning board, because it was a conditional use permit, actually extended the pre-blast surveys out to 1,000 feet.
Yep.
Or maybe it was even 12,000.
Yeah, it was, it was a large area. It was definitely a large area because of it.
The applicant may have the answer to this better than you do, but in terms of where they're proposing to blast here, how many homes are within 500 or 1,000 feet?
I haven't seen the area yet, so I really can't say. I don't imagine it's a significant amount, because a lot of that land is open land behind. So I'm not sure how many are actually, have you done a?
We'll get the applicant back up here in a second, we'll ask them, I just thought you might know, out of curiosity. So as a part of what the applicant's got to present to you, they've got to actually show you, when you say they have to have a blasting plan.
Yep.
They're going to show you like a site plan?
They will give me a site plan, they will give me a plan of where they're going to be drilling, how many drill holes, how deep the drill holes are going to be. It's, it's a pretty comprehensive type of a report that they submit, and then I will review that, and, you know, if I, if I see anything that's jumping out that say, and again, I am not a blasting expert, you have to be a certified licensed blaster to be an expert in it.
Okay.
I know enough to be able to understand what the report that they're giving me says, and I can look at that and look at our blasting requirements and make sure that that meets it.
Okay. At this point, we haven't progressed that far in order to have a plan?
Correct.
Okay.
I have not seen anything yet.
Other comments or questions?
Thank you so much for the testimony.
You're very welcome.
I want to also ask any other abutters or citizens who haven't had a chance to speak and want to. In a moment, if there's no others, we'll close the public hearing, we'll invite the applicant back to address some of the things that we heard from the, from the abutters. No other abutters? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Brett, you want to come back up? Yes, please, please bring him. Take a moment to get settled in and then introduce who you've got with you, and then let's learn some more.
Jason Riley from Main Drilling and Blasting.
Which company, sir?
Main Drilling and Blasting.
Main, main.
Yes, yes.
Was it your company that involved with the Outlet Mall?
We did, yes, yes, correct, correct.
Can you offer any comments on some of the things that you heard from the abutters, some of their concerns?
Yes, I, I mean, I kind of appreciate everyone's well concerns, you know, as the chief mentioned, we did the blasting for the premium, premium outlets. That was, we blasted 1.3 million yards there, and up to a 90-foot cut through there. As you mentioned, the pre-blast survey was, I believe it was 1,500 feet that we reached out. The main concern was the town's wells that we blasted just outside of the wellhead protection area. Again, 1.3 million yards, there was no issues with the wells, there was no contamination. You know, when, when following the rules and regulations and best management practices, excuse me, blasting can achieve the, the result that, that we're looking for, safe and sound. You know, on Brett's project here, you have about 3,000 yards that you're looking to blast to get his roadway in. You know, again, when we follow the rules and regulations like, like we can, and, you know, again, Crown, Crown Point and other projects that we've had in this town, you know, we've had a very good success here, and, you know, again, I, I think it's, it's more than doable. We blast in neighborhoods every day all throughout the state and have a, you know, really good success rate.
So when you talk about blasting in neighborhoods all across the state, give me a sense of proximity to homes that you would normally operate and be comfortable with blasting?
We'll blast as close as 20 feet off of a home. We'll blast for an existing sub, for a new subdivision. Once they come in and put new houses in, we'll come in and do phase two, and again, all within close proximity of the existing houses. You know, for I-93, we did a large push in a nine, from exit three up to exit five. You know, again, abutters all along the outside of 93, right along the edge of the highway, and again, very successful.
What's your experience with contamination from unspent explosive?
It's, the nitrates can be an issue if it's, you know, again, if it's not employed correctly. You know, we have our best management practices that we follow. One of the products that we use is an emulsion product that's, it's, it's, it's resistant to water, it doesn't break down when it's used properly with the proper detonators, the proper hole size. The product does consume itself, there is a potential for residual over when, again, that's where we work with the earthwork contractor, where you don't leave large concentrations of blasted ledge in place so that you have a concentration of any residual. It's excavated, it's moved, it's run through crushers, it's, it doesn't just sit there in a pile. So again, it's, you know, following best management, using the right, the blast, the correct blast design and using the product the way it's supposed to, and you won't have any problems.
Okay, thank you. Other members of the board that have questions?
Could I ask, how much insurance do you carry?
Typically, $5 million.
And while it's not, I don't want to embarrass you, but have you, how much of that, how much call has been on that in the last five years?
I'm s-
How much call has been made on your insurance claims against you?
I mean, we have a lot of claims, I mean, a lot of people, I.
Don't worry, I was just.
Yeah, no, I mean, honestly, I mean, a lot of people do, you know, they just feel that if there's a, you know, a potential issue, but as far as, you know, actual damage or whatnot, you know, like the chief said, you know, fly rock, yes, we have had fly rock in the past, however, as far as legitimate claims and actual, you know, damage payout, I couldn't even tell you.
No, I don't, I didn't, just, I was just saying in a field.
For 3,000 yards of, of blasting material or maybe the configuration of Brett's roadway is what matters, how many days of blasting or periods of blasting would it take to deal with this?
You know, on this project, we figured anywhere from 10 to 15 days, you'd probably 20 to 30 blasts at, at the most. You know, and again, small, I think the deepest cut on this project, our depth that would be taken out, removed is roughly 12 to 13 feet, 10 to 13 feet in that depth. So again, it's not very deep holes, it's, it's small site work construction, it's not a, a mining operation or, you know, major alteration of the terrain through there.
Mr. Vaughn, could you give us, could you repeat the information you gave us at the beginning? How many days of hammering did you say, and how many hours, or how many hours per day and how many days?
I just, I've been, you know, told by the, it started hearing it from the road contractors that were quoting the job, that, you know, we could be looking at six weeks or two months. But it all depends on the hardness of the rock.
Yes, I understand that.
We, like I said, we did those tests, and that, we drilled to find out how deep it was, and how kind of, how hard it was. And they tell me that the stuff at the bottom of the road's hard, and the stuff at the top is softer. So the stuff up where the homes, you know.
Okay, thank you. Neil, you had a question, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I was just curious about the process of removing the rock. When you drill down, is it like one continuous blast, and that takes out the six feet or eleven feet that you need? Or does it like come out in layers? You're doing like more smaller blast, or is it just one big blast that does that?
Yeah, so in this case, your drill holes would be to the depth that we would need. So if, you know, figure if it's a ten-foot cut, we would take that depth, that lift, or that depth at one time. But as far as the actual surface area that would be blasted at one time, figure fifteen hundred square feet in it, per area of each blast.
And that would take it, that would take it down to the complete depth.
Correct, correct. And I did speak with an abutter the other day, and explain that if we need to remove six feet of ledge, we drill nine feet. We just basically drill three feet over to make, ensure that we pull that grade. After they come through and excavate, that ledge is pretty solid and intact. It doesn't blast, you know, break down another ten or twenty feet. It's, again, you know, our typical, our sub-drill is three feet. So when we, again, that achieves your grade, so that we don't leave them high bottom. Because typically, if you don't drill deep enough, if you need to remove six feet, and you only drilled a seven-foot hole, we would leave them high spots all through there. So it's not a massive overbreak, if you will. And I guess as far as, you know, our typical hole diameter for a site project is a three-inch diameter hole. Well, in this case, just knowing our blast design, your first hole would call it zero. Your next hole would be six feet away, because that ledge is not going to break beyond the next hole as far as the six feet. It's not, put a hole here, one there, and it breaks thirty feet over. It's typically right to your next hole. So it's, it's all based on your blast design.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. Other questions or comments? Tom?
So you talk, I hear about hardened soft rock and stuff like that. Is that going to make a difference as far as fissures or cracks that might migrate or impact wells of abutting houses, or?
I don't, no, I don't believe so.
So you're not expecting that your blast would create these fissures that Mike Redding referred to, or whatever?
No, no. No. And that rock, we did the test probes, and it's hard intact rock. So it's, I don't see it being, it's not like a shale-y, you know, real fractured ledge by any means.
Okay. But we still don't, I mean, there's always some level of concern as to whether or not you create issues with a neighboring well as far as water production is concerned, or?
Well, like I had mentioned, if our first hole is here, and the next one's six feet away, it doesn't overbreak beyond that six feet, you know, ten, twenty, thirty feet. It's, the rock will fracture typically within that six-foot zone. And any vibration that you'll feel out of that, and again, it's all about our blast design, on how many pounds, how many holes are in each blast, how many pounds per delay. Basically, the residual vibration, initially, it's high, but it basically dissipates as it gets further from that hole. And again, we designed that around the closest structure. So if it's a hundred feet away, we design our blast so that the energy dissipates by the time it reaches that structure. Don't see any issues with, you know, somebody's wells fifteen hundred feet in the ground, or five hundred feet in the ground, or it's not a massive, you know, it doesn't start opening up caverns in the ground, and giant cracks and fissures.
Right, and I don't think that they're terribly concerned about fracturing the granite. That would allow more water to seep through the cracks and stuff, although that would allow the residual chemicals and stuff to go through as well.
Right.
I got the impression from Mike's letter that he's somewhat concerned about compression and closing off the wells, or drying up the wells, because now you've compacted, if you will, around them or something, and removed some of those traces that the water can flow through. Do you, have you ever seen any of that kind of an issue, or?
I have not, honestly, I've not seen anything like that. I don't typically see the blasting helping the water flow or restricting it. It's not, I haven't run into it. It's, the biggest concern in the 93 projects, the Outlet Mall project, was contamination. I don't, I know we didn't have any contamination on any of the projects, and I'm not aware of anyone's well as far as having less or greater flow, so no.
I remember during the Outlet Mall's blasting period, there were some periods where the monitoring wells were turning up results that caused changes in plans. And I mean, it wasn't necessarily something that got all the way over to the town's supply wells, but I remember hearing that monitoring wells were causing some reaction and some changes to the plan. I don't know if you were personally involved with some of that, and remember it?
I was involved with the project, and you know, they had, well, I think there was three different monitoring companies involved. And they had monitoring walls, wells, excuse me, all around the perimeter of the site. I know they did track everything, you know, just to basically, you know, again, you're talking, you know, over a million yards of material that's being blasted, you know, ten, fifteen thousand yards at a time. And they would, occasionally, you would see a spike on a well that, you know, again, is right next to these massive mock piles. You know, and again, all that ledge stayed right there. There was never any spikes above any of the state limits. And I thought they did a really good job of monitoring the wells and paying close attention to that.
I know, Alistair and Nelson, you guys were around that time. Do you remember what, it's sort of tickled my brain about them being monitoring the wells and having?
Oh yeah, I know, they were monitoring wells.
Where they got them, they're still there.
And they had to be reports done, and I don't believe there was any significant bad report in, during the course of that blasting.
I thought I remember at least some periods where they were making some changes.
John might remember better than I, Mr. Chairman, but I remember there were some periods where question was raised, and they had to shut down operations for a period of time. And then, after sorting out the data or whatever, it was resumed, and they continued with the blasting. Now, maybe John remembers that.
I remember a couple of seismic-
John, can you come up to the microphone over here?
Yeah.
There were-
I'm sure it's working.
Yep.
There were a couple of times where the seismic testing exceeded the limits, and they were shutting down for a period of time to make sure that they didn't exceed them again. And again, at that time, I don't believe there was any actual physical damage caused by the limits. They just exceeded the limits that they had set on the seismic testing.
Okay, thank you for that. Other questions or comments of the gentleman, of Jason Riley? Then how about Mr. Vaughn, questions of him? Mr. Vaughn or Jason, is there anything that you heard from some of the abutters that you'd wish to specifically respond to?
I don't have anything specific, I-
Do you know how many of the abutters' homes are within a five hundred or a thousand foot of your blast area?
I believe it's three.
That's what I thought, but maybe the one across the street too, but I think it's three.
Okay. I would assume that those are going to be the two on both sides of the driveway, and then one across the street.
No, they're, they're all to one side of the driveway. There's nothing to the other side.
Okay, I got you. Other comments or questions? General discussion by the board.
Could I add one thing?
Yes, of course.
About the water, and the lack of, or the testimony about the lack of. Just, just to point out that there was, six abutting wells have been dug since the discussion was had about, you know, the water in the area. The least producing one was, gets eight gallons a minute, and there's four that are twenty-plus, and one that's thirty.
Where are you talking about, where are the wells located that you're talking about?
They're abutting lots. The one that's the closest to the woods that I realized, and everybody knows, he's got a terrible situation there, and he has had a terrible situation, but there's one that's getting twenty-plus gallons at 220-foot depth. Is the same elevation as his property, directly across the street, so it's-
Oh, you were talking about wells across the street from your place? Okay.
They're abutting, yes.
They're abutting.
Yeah, no, I get you, but you're in a completely different watershed configuration when you cross the street. There's never been-
Well, then, there's, and then there's, well, I don't know that, because I heard a lot of testimony that there's, that down the road, across the street, that there was no water as well. They use those as examples, I don't know, they got four gallons or something, they had to drill a long way. And one of them's on Greater Road, abutting at the top of the hill.
Okay.
So I don't even know if it's relevant at this point, but there's water.
Well, I, thank you for sharing the additional information about things. Relevant or not, it's your right to share whatever information you think is important to your application to persuade the board. Okay, so let's close off testimony, and let's have a general discussion by members of the board. Lynn, you were looking like you had a comment to make.
I'm still confused as to why, we've been going round and round with this for a while.
Yep.
And it's always been said, no blasting, no blasting, we don't need to blast, there's no, nothing to be done there. Why all of a sudden are we coming back saying, I have to blast?
I took from the applicant, just that he's learned about changing conditions, but I agree with you, or at least my own opinion is, and I supported the subdivision, I voted for it.
I do too.
I listened to all of the debate about the water supply, and was persuaded that the applicant had the right balance in terms of visibility to develop his property. The difference between blasting and not blasting is a matter of time and convenience, and I'm sure dollars, although the applicant didn't talk about dollars in this. And that's a little different than, do you have a right to develop your property? It's about, do I have a right to develop it in the most convenient and least expensive way versus the way that we know has a bit of level of safety in it? And that's an important consideration for me. Other, Nelson?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'm not convinced of the necessity to do this. First of all, I think that we had a lot of testimony about the rock and the effect on the wells. I did not vote for this subdivision in the first place, and I'm not about to vote to change this requirement that was on the original approval.
Alistair, you look like you're working on a comment.
Well, I suppose the thing that would, I guess, bother me if I were an abutter, and you can all shoot me down, if you're going to listen to that hammering for two months, and I remember when they were doing the hammering for the, to widen the road for the Outlet Mall, and every time I drove past, you know, you'd see the thing going, I thought that was objectionable, but I do understand the effect on the wells. I don't know, but if, if the blast survey covered that the wells' production rate, and that would have to be restored or better, I could be convinced. But that's the only way I could convince, that any abutter who has a problem with wells after the blasting has to have a well drilled for them at no cost to make sure that they maintain their water level or better. I do understand the conflict. I mean, speaking for myself, I would hate to have sixty days of hammering, but that's where I am.
I got you. Lynn?
I agree with that. I'd rather have one big blast than a month's worth of hammering. But what happens if we have, and I've heard a couple of comments tonight, what happens if we have one well that you can't find another place on that property to drill a well to give them what they have now? What do you do then?
Well, my thought, and I'm probably straying out of my knowledge, if somebody really had a well, no wells potential on their land, I would have thought, being neighbors, they might agree to a well being drilled on a neighbor's property with some sort of access easement, so that they still do get water. I mean, if some of the properties are as good as Mr. Vaughn said, then I would hope that neighborly, I mean, speaking for myself-
But we can't control that.
Yeah, we can't, and Mr. Vaughn can't guarantee either. So as a planning board, we can require pre-blast surveys, and then require that the applicant or the blaster have insurance, and then leave it to the world to sort that out, based on there being pre-blast surveys and insurance. But requiring and saying what we think the insurance ought to do, if there's a claim, and how it would be resolved, we're beyond what a planning board's capable of doing.
Yeah, I know that.
And that, although that might provide a comfort level, since we can't do that, decide for yourself when you vote whether you've achieved that comfort level or not. Tom, did you have a?
Yeah, I might as well weigh in as well. I think I hesitantly approved this, but I heard a lot of testimony back when regarding water sources and water capabilities, and people that believed there was plenty of water, and people that believed there was very little water, and a lot of concern about the impacts that that might have, either the other houses up the hill taking water that would normally run down, or whatever. So there's always, as I understand it, been a concern about the water supply. Any risk to the existing water supply, you know, that might not be replaceable is very concerning. I'm not sure how to justify it. I understand that the chances are very small, that your risk factors, that your experience shows that you don't have a problem, but that, obviously, there has been a problem around the country, or it wouldn't be anecdotally on the internet and around, that issues do happen, and that there are contaminations. And the last thing we want to do is have a contamination show up after we've all agreed that, you know, no blasting was going to go on, and now we're going to change the plan and do blasting. So I, I'm having a hard time justifying moving to blasting in this area for this particular situation. Although I agree that eight weeks of hammering versus a week or two of blasting seems like a pretty harsh way to go. The neighbors, for the most part, seem to think that's the better way to go, from their own safety and concerns. And so I'd have to support that. With only one neighbor talking about preferring the shorter time, and they're across the street, probably less susceptible to well problems and stuff. I just, I'm not convinced that we can take that risk at this point.
I think the same, I applied the same thought process as you did with respect to whether it's more convenient to have one short period of blasting, and although, hearing that it's ten to fifteen days, which I assume to be three weeks, because it's five business days each, that's not exactly as short as what I thought short would be. But I could see how you, how a neighbor is going to weigh the convenience of one versus the other, and, but it's not a matter of what choice that I would make. We've heard from all the neighbors, they've decided which one they think is the least or most convenient, and that makes a lot of sense. I look back to when we voted for this the first time we approved the subdivision, and I was convinced that the water issues had been addressed and resolved. I wouldn't have voted for approval of the whole subdivision if blasting was a part of the plan way back when. And the approval of the subdivision was that close, that one vote would have been the difference. And I hear what the folks from Main Drilling and Blasting are offering up, and the testimony from the abutters is also very valuable stuff. And even to the extent that, the letter that we have from Mr. Redding, he is a civil engineer, and so he's not without some scientific basis for the allegations that he makes. That's persuasive, risky stuff. And even though two months of drilling and hammering might be a damn huge nuisance, if it was next to my house, I would probably pick that nuisance over the idea that I'd risk hurting my well or my foundation, and then making claims, and having bottled water, and figuring out what in the world I do about it when it happens. Plus, I leave for work in the morning, and I wouldn't hear all the hammering and stuff.
You'd hear about it when you got home.
Yep. So- Yeah, the dogs would be all up on the ceiling. Okay, is there more discussion?
Just one more thing I didn't mention was our experience. This board has had experience with the Home Depot site. And my recollection on that site is that there was contamination caused by the ANFO, and that's why they switched from ANFO to Codex, which was not to continue, in order to continue with the blasting. So to me, that experience is enough to say that this is our experience as a planning board, and I'm not going to vote for this. that this is our experience as a planning board, and I'm not going to vote for this.
Yep. I understand the experience, well, I hear what you've said about Home Depot, and I hear what Captain Manuelli said about Home Depot and potentially there being some gas tanks. And obviously, there is also the passage of time. That was, you know, 15 years ago, and things may be done differently. I'm a little reluctant to sort of talk about contamination with related to blasting being something that's so certain, I mean, we're doing blasting in lots of places around town, and we don't police that for this level of concern. But this is so close to some very, very fragile wells where there's just no other solution. I couldn't even guess how many zeros are on the bill to run water up Wilson Hill Road. It's well, well beyond, you know, any of the costs that would be incurred from spending a couple of months hammering instead of blasting. Anyway, I'm open for more discussion from the board, and if not, the board is prepared to take some action on this. The floor is open.
If you're looking for a motion, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we deny this request, I believe, for changing to allow blasting.
So Nelson's motion is to deny the request to amend the previously approved site plan to remove the stated condition. Is there a second for Alistair's, for Nelson's motion?
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Koenig. Discussion on it. All in favor of the motion, which is to deny the requested amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? One opposed? Any abstaining? So that is 5-1-0 to deny the requested amendment. That concludes the work on this agenda item, and we are on to item six, which is Silver Realty LLC as the applicant and owner. Review for acceptance in consideration of a two-lot residential subdivision. The parcel's located at 102 Bean Road in the R1 residential by map, and Aquifer Conservation District's tax map 6C, Lot 145. It's case number PB2019-8. I like that we have case numbers now, little docket numbers. That's kind of fun. All right. Let's give a minute to let the room clear a little bit from the folks. It was an amendment of a previously approved one, so we wouldn't have to accept it. But thank you for keeping up with those details, unless Kelly tells me I'm wrong about that, in which case we'll go back and do something different.
No attorney best.
Thank you for checking on that. Okay, now the room's had a chance to clear. Kelly, is there anything we need to hear on item number six, Silver Realty, before we hear from the applicant?
As you already mentioned, it's a two-lot subdivision that's being proposed. And another item of note is that the applicant did receive a variance with regard to frontage for one of the two lots. Other than that variance for the frontage, both lots are compliant with the lot and yard requirements of the R1 district.
Okay. Thank you for that. Once you've had a chance to settle in and sign in, when you're ready, please introduce yourself and tell us about the two-lot subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jerry Prunier. I'm an attorney representing the applicant, and it's nice to see some faces for a long time. It's been a while. With me is Tucker McCarthy, our engineer, who will make the presentations.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you, Jerry, for the introduction. As he mentioned, my name is Tucker McCarthy. I'm an engineer with Keats Northstrom Associates. We were the engineer and surveyor on this project. And with us this evening is also members, representatives of Silver Realty, who are the owners of the property. This property is located at 102 Bean Road. It's the north side of Bean Road. It is located between Brienne Drive and Westcott Drive. The existing lot is approximately seven and a half acres. There is an existing house on the lot. As mentioned at the beginning of our introduction, we did obtain a variance for this new lot for 145 feet of frontage, where 250 feet of frontage is required. The existing house will be on a lot of 106,667 square feet, and the new lot is approximately 219,000 square feet respectively, which both meet the minimum 100,000 square feet for a lot. And I don't believe I mentioned, and I apologize what zone we're in, I don't know if it was mentioned previously, but this is the R1 residential district. So this new lot, we do have Town Water on Bean Road. This lot will be serviced by Town Water. We have checked with the water department, and there is adequate water to service this lot. And it will also be serviced by private septic. We have submitted to the state for the septic approval. We had some comments which we responded to, and at this point, we are waiting, really just waiting on approval from the board so that we can get an address so that the state can issue the permit.
Okay. Excellent. Anything else with respect to the presentation you'd like to make?
I don't know if you'd like to speak about it now, but we do have a waiver request.
Go ahead and introduce it.
Okay. I'm actually going to hand this over to Mr. Prunier to present the waiver request.
We have a waiver request not to put in sidewalks. Bean Road, along most of that area, just doesn't have sidewalks, and it makes no sense to have a two-lot subdivision put in a sidewalk in that area.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation of that. I think that you've probably provided enough information for the board to take up acceptance of the application. Any members of the board require more information?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we have sufficient information so that we can make a decision on this project.
Okay. Alistair makes a motion. The application's complete. Second by Lynn. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0 to accept the application as complete. Is there any additional information with respect to your entire presentation? Do you want to have some dialogue with the board, or what works best for you?
Just real quick, I did want to mention that, I believe it was earlier this week, we did receive some comments from engineering, one of which they spoke about the existing, the distance for the existing right-of-way. It is actually shown on our plans, so I think that maybe they just missed that notation on the plan, so we do have the 25 feet that is required.
Okay.
And then the other items, where I think kind of just reiterations of maintaining the sight line, and that's pretty much it. So there's really nothing outstanding.
Okay. You talking about the peer review that we had done on this?
This was...
Yes.
Yes, I guess.
Our public works review.
Yes, sorry. Yes. I apologize. That's correct.
Thank you for that.
Excuse me, could you explain that 25, what was that 25-foot business? I didn't, what was the comment?
Sure. So it's section 4.1.4.12.1, future provision for future widening and upgrading of streets. And it specifically says the board shall acquire dedication by deed and platted in general accordance with the typical sections at least 25 feet from the centerline of the existing town road.
Okay.
Gotcha.
I'm sorry about that.
Just didn't understand what it is.
Okay. And if you, if you look on the plan...
It looks like it's there.
Yeah, it says 25 feet per reference plan number one.
Excellent.
I apologize. I was just like going on, going for it.
Understood. Other comments or questions by the planning board? If there's none, are there any, oh, sorry, Tom?
Just real quick, you said there was how much frontage on this property?
So the lot for the existing house will have 300 feet, and the variance was requested for 145 feet for the new lot. It does open up quite a bit from the back.
No, but why does it look like it only says 108 feet? Am I reading the wrong reference there or something?
So it's probably it's because it's broken up into sections. I don't, I'm not, I apologize. I don't see where you're seeing 108.
Well, near where it says road.
Okay, yeah. So if you look at just up the page from that, there's an arrow pointing. It says 36.84. So it's accumulation of 108.23 and 36.84. Do you see where I'm talking about?
I, yeah, it's on the other side of the road, pointing across at the northern portion.
The sideline.
So there's a notation right here.
Yeah.
That's calling out this section. So this 108.23 is from here.
Can I get you to grab one of the portable microphones and bring that with you? Sorry for being a stickler for that. I mean, you don't have to bring the plan with you. Just bring that microphone.
That's easier to bring the plan.
Well, okay.
And I can actually show you guys better here. So there is a notation here, calling out this section of the frontage.
Why is that broken up, out of curiosity?
Because it's a different, this is a radius section of the frontage, and then this is a straight line. So there's, just, it's just broken up into two different pieces. So the 108 feet is a curve, and then there's a straight section of 36.84 feet.
Yeah, it's not much of a curve, but there is a description on the other side of the road that says 1,395-foot radius.
Yeah. Okay.
And from there, it goes straight for the extra 38 feet. All right. Thank you.
It's just so small, I can't. Couldn't see the marker there that was indicating the end of the 108 feet.
Thank you for that detail. Other questions or comments by the board? If there are none, then are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in on the two-lot subdivision? I noticed that in your application, you collected up written responses from quite a few neighbors. I didn't sort of go through the process of matching them all up with your butters, but perhaps you can walk me through that. Do you have written comments from all of your butters?
We did actually, as part of the zoning process, we did have two letters that were submitted, and they were expressing support of this project.
Okay. And does it, it covers all of the butters to the property or in here somewhere?
One, two, three, four, five.
I don't believe that is...
I don't see anybody on, what's the other back street?
Not all.
Okay, a lot, but not all. Okay, gotcha. There are no people present here?
I have questions.
Yeah, if you're a member of the public, please. Yep, that's the way it works. Come forward. Take your chance to sit down and sign in, and then when you're ready, introduce yourself and tell us what your questions are. It is a little awkward because you'll ask your questions of us, and then you got to go away and sit down, and then we'll have the applicant come answer them later.
Your process, no problem.
Yes, I didn't invent it.
My name's John Norman. I'm an abutter on 98 Bean Road, so if you're looking at the map, I would be to the left on Bean Road. So I, I just didn't hear brought up, so I just had a couple of questions. Conceptually, I have no issue with the subdivision at all. I just wanted to ask if there was any variances being requested for a septic, or any sewer, or any of the variances for wells that would normally not, that would go outside the normal setback rules of the new law. That's all.
So if there were any variances, those would have already been addressed by the ZBA. I know that there has been a variance granted just for the road frontage and for no other reason. And so the applicant, at least at this point, hasn't come forward indicating construction within any setback.
Okay.
That I can answer. How about that?
That's easy. And I do understand that, you know, this is a discovery process, right? Once you get into dividing up the property, things happen, and so I just wanted to make sure that nothing is...
What do you mean by the, it's a discovery process?
Anytime you're working on a piece of property, there's, and you're, you know, you're developing plans, you're doing surveys, right? So things just get discovered normally.
I understand, okay.
As you just progress through the process, that's all. And so I just wanted to have the opportunity just to ask to see if anything changed and if there was any other requests. That's all.
So it's a good point. When we're dealing with some of the commercial site plans in town, we get very precise with where things are laid out on a lot. When it's a residential subdivision, we don't necessarily control exactly where the footprint of the house will be or exactly where the septic will be. Within the setbacks and where the, where the topography is suitable, the applicant can put his driveway and his shed and house and all that. So we have a building envelope. And so sometimes folks will interpret that to mean there's a change because the applicant came forward initially and said, I think the house will probably be here. And that was never something that we took to mean the final answer. That's the best I can offer you in terms of what might change. If he gets to intruding in setbacks or something like that, then yeah, we get to come back and have him look at it.
Not a problem. Thanks for your time.
Thanks. Other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? None? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, have the applicant come back up. The applicants asked for a sidewalk waiver based on there being no continuous sidewalks related in the area, and not much function to creating sidewalks across the front of two lots. What's the will of the board with respect to the applicant's sidewalk waiver?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we grant the sidewalk waiver according on sections 406, 1R, and 420, on the basic, specific circumstance relative to the condition in such order, indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and tend to the regulations.
Some proper motion to waive the sidewalk requirement. Is there a second? Second by Nelson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0 to grant the waiver. Is the board prepared to take final action on the proposal?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant a full final approval for this two-lot residential subdivision, subject to the recommendations that Kelly put together dated March 14, 2019.
When you said recommendations, you mean conditions?
Conditions, aye, sorry.
So they're binding?
Binding conditions.
That's excellent. Is there a second for Alistair's motion to grant conditional final approval? Second by Lynn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0. You're all set. Thank you very much. I get a letter from the department.
Thank you.
Item number seven on the agenda is Kinsley Oddgood Barnard, applicant-owner. Review for acceptance in consideration of a waiver for site plan review for a dog daycare grooming boarding business. The parcel's located at 9 Harris Avenue in the C1 Limited Commercial, Aquifer Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts, and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 61, Lot 38. It is case Planning Board 21909. We have a request from the applicant, let's see, it's this one, asking that we continue this to our April 16 meeting. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we agree to the request of the applicant to continue this to April 16th, Planning Board meeting with no further notice to abutters.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Neil's got it. Neil was the first. All right. Any discussion on the continuance? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? That is 6-0-0 to grant that continuance. That brings us to item number nine, which is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. One of the items to address under other items of concern is a request from the Patriots Car Wash applicant that we grant an extension of the time to meet the conditions of approval. Kelly, has he asked for a six-month extension or a period of time?
He did not specify in his email, so...
Does the staff recommend a time?
Six months, I feel, be appropriate.
Okay. There's a request for a continuance, and the staff recommends that we grant our usual six-month extension for the conditions of approval. Is there discussion? Is there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the six months' extension as requested by the Patriot Car Wash.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Lynn. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0 to do that. Are there other, discussion, are possible actions on items of concern for us tonight?
Question, Mr. Chairman, for staff, actually, in this case. How long after a plan is approved does the person have to execute it? Is there a time period in which...
Do you mean after...
Which will expire?
After it's recorded or after the conditional approval?
After its final approval. And I guess...
So... Conditional approval.
What?
Conditional approval. What we're dealt with just now was a conditional approval that you need an extension on, right?
Right. I think Nelson's question's a little different, though. So subdivision applications have a period of time, and I think it's a year, to substantially begin the process of putting in whatever subdivision improvements there are. Site plans, my understanding is that, I mean, so once the subdivision vests, once there's enough work, it's permanent, and they've got that for forever. With site plans, I don't know if I know the equivalent rule or regulation.
I don't believe MIRMAC has a requirement of X percentage of work to be completed for it to be vested. As long as it's finally approved, they can take as long as they want to.
That's my understanding as well. When they've achieved conditional, when they've met the conditions of approval and get their plan signed and recorded, it is a recorded plan going forward. plan signed and recorded, it is a recorded plan going forward. If they fail to meet their conditions of approval, then we've either got to extend it to give them more time, or ultimately, it could expire, and they would bring it back before us. Sometimes we, not resurrect, but we revive a previously expired plan when there's been no change in the regulations.
That's what I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, the change in the regulation, as long as you include that.
Yeah. However, even when we do that, it, it's simply a comment by staff that there's been no change in the regulations and no reason not to do again what we did once before. However, we could take any approach we choose once something has expired and it's brought before us again.
But you basically answered my question in saying that they don't expire, once they're signed.
Yeah, once they're signed and they met their conditions of approval, they go get recorded, registry deeds, and there's no expiration for that. Subdivisions work a little bit differently, where they've got to do actually some dirt, some work in the dirt. But we don't have a percentage, and I don't think that we're particularly aggressive at trying to look at undoing people's approval of subdivisions. There is a Supreme Court case that talks about roadways and nebulous standards.
Subdivisions, or, yeah.
Yep. Other comments or questions under items of concern? If not, then we have before us, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of February 19, 2019.
We approve as printed?
Turn your microphone on and say it.
I move we approve as printed?
Lynn moves that we approve the minutes as printed. Nelson seconds. Any discussion on the February 19 minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So that is a 6-0-0 vote to approve those minutes. That concludes our business for tonight, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second? Lynn seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for all the work, and don't forget to turn microphones off.